Is Christine coming?
No.
No?
I don't know. Welcome all to the town council meeting Wednesday, December 4th, 2019. Is there any visitors that would like to be recognized? Good, let's move right along. Not that it's good. Okay, so appointments. So, um, oh, sorry. Right, so can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the November 20th, 2019 meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, number four on the list is appointments. So, what had happened was we'd gotten a resume and a cover letter from an appointment for the unaffiliated party, and so it kind of made me think that during this process, do we get any other information from any of the other appointments that the other parties make? Meaning whether they send us something, or they basically just put forth a name to marry, gets put on the she, and then we appoint that individual. So, through the charter, the charter indicates that the individual that vacates a seat should be replaced by the corresponding party. We now have more unaffiliated people, we now have a green party that's pretty much a part of all this system now. So, the charter states one thing, so my thought process was, is to get some sort of policy in place that will kind of lead us, you know, down some paths that we're going to have to cross as it relates to that. Because the current policy in the current charter is going to indicate that, you know, no green party or no unaffiliated, you know, unless somebody vacated a seat, would get, you know, get appointed. So, we have to, I think, address the fact that, of how we do this. So, do we set a policy in place that's going to maybe give the opportunity for the, in the charter, it says 30 days. That they have 30 days to replace somebody in a vacated seat.
The party has 30 days?
The party of the vacated seat, correct. So now, we're going to have to address, basically, how do we then open this up to somebody from a green party or an unaffiliated that, you know, wants to get a, get a place on the seat? Because it's going to have to be addressed. And even though the charter indicates Republicans and Democrats, it does not address Green Party. You know, it doesn't, it, unaffiliated, it's always been that way, so I'm pointing to Erin because she's an unaffiliated, so we got her information, and when I got that, I'm like, well, why don't we get it from everybody? And I mean, even a letter. So, we get a letter from the RTC, the DTC Chair, Search Chair, whomever that may be, to say, this is why we are going to vet this individual for this appointment. Because we just get, here, here's a name, give it to Mary, first come, first served. She's in. I said to her, it was like Dairy Queen. First come, first served, you're up next. And I don't, I think we need to vet these individuals that are being put on these boards and commissions, you know, in some way or some process. So, I think it's up to us then to kind of talk about that policy on how we would want to put it together. I'm not saying we do it today, but I think that needs to be put on an agenda item very soon, because it has to be addressed. So, if everybody's, go ahead.
No, I'd allow, and to add to that, I think the parties do serve as a proper vetting mechanism, but I think at bare minimum, a letter, a letter of intent, and how you would serve that. Granted, people aren't fighting over these positions, but still, to bring some credibility to what we do, I think a letter at bare minimum, and I agree with you on that.
So, we can basically, yep?
After, after the 30 days.
It would have to be after the 30 days, because you'd have-
I think we need to uphold that 30-day timeframe-
We have to.
-to allow the party to fill a position, and if they don't fill a position, then at that point, I think it's up to the rest of the town to provide names if they so choose.
But this doesn't apply to elected positions.
This is appointed. A vacated seat. So, somebody resigns their seat, they have, you know, you're going to have whatever time limit left, and we want to, you know, replace that individual on that seat. So, yeah, I mean, we have to follow the charter, obviously, so the charter dictates what we're going to do now. But I think the policy has to be kind of worked on so that we know what's going to happen with the other individuals and the other parties. Because you have to include them in it.
So, you're, you're saying 30 days for the party to replace the candidate, and after that, it becomes an open seat for anyone?
That's what the charter says. 30 days, you have the, you have the opportunity, within 30 days, to replace a vacated seat by the, by the departed party. So, then it becomes after that, 30 days, what do we do?
Okay, the, an issue, an associated issue is how do you let people know these vacancies aren't there?
Well, I mean, that's communication, that's on us, so we'll talk about that on social media and how we get stuff out to the public to let them know that these boards and these commissions are open. And we have, that, that falls on us, because we have to make sure that more people know. Because how many times you hear from people, I wish I knew? So, then how do we get that message to them so that they know that these boards and commissions are open, and they have the ability? And what the process is that we're going to put in place for them to get, you know, get on that board of commission? And that's why the vetted process of saying, well, listen, we think this is a good individual for that board of commission, instead of just filling a seat. We have to get away from the, you know, the seat's cold, let's just fill it. Because you're getting individuals that don't show up, we don't have forums, we can't even have a meeting. I mean, it's got to stop, so. That's just food for another day, I guess, and then, you know, so at least it gives everybody the opportunity to talk, to think about that, and maybe next meeting, put it on again and see what we can kind of come up with. All right? So, at that point, we have, we've received documentation information, Eric's been great at talking to Eric, and so he's provided John, John May, John Feeney, Tanya. We all have information that everybody was sent on those individuals that they could review. We also have Erin's information. So, those, one, two, three, four, five, if anybody has any questions on those are open to, we don't have Jerome's, so obviously, I did call James Staunton, tell him that we needed some information, we don't have it, so his name will have to be tabled. Because I felt it's important that we start this now as far as getting the information so, so that when we're looking at a name, we know. And it's got to be across the board, we're not going to pick and choose who we do this for. So, at this point, we can, if everybody's comfortable with the appointments for John Escobales, John May, John, Jason Feeney, Tanya Abitello, and Erin Guadet. Certainly welcome a motion to approve those appointments.
I'll make that motion.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Well, about discussion for a second.
Oh, sorry, discussion.
Just for one thing.
That we didn't-
I don't even know who Erin Guadet is, I'm sure she's-
She's right here.
Oh, okay, fine.
I mean, that would, nothing to interrupt you, so that was one of the other things as far as part of the policy and process, do we want them to come in and talk to us? Do they, do we want to hear from, it's only the unaffiliated, it's that we require that, right?
It's only appropriate, I mean, they can't take the time to come and introduce themselves, and then I don't know-
I agree.
Well, we've discussed this in the past, and it's a problem for a lot of people to get to, at least to the morning meeting. It's oftentimes impossible for them.
Well, we have a month.
Yeah, we have a month.
Why can't we invite them to the evening meeting?
I mean, they're invited, I mean, the unaffiliateds are invited.
Well, that's, my point was that Erin's letter comes in to fill a spot on the Human Services, I believe?
Correct.
But if I recollect correctly, that vacancy just occurred about a week, a week and a half ago, from Elizabeth Isaacson.
And she's replacing, Elizabeth was an unaffiliated.
I understand that, but it's not even like, the ink is not even wet on the resignation from Isaacson, and then we're going to just, what happened to the 30 days?
The 30 days gives somebody the, the opportunity, up to 30 days, to replace a vacated seat, up to. So, they can, if they, if an unaffiliated is replacing an unaffiliated, they, they provide a cover letter, they provide their resume, and then they can be appointed.
I'd just like to point out, Human Services has been really challenged with having forums, so anybody that's willing to serve on it, that has some experience or relevance to that board of commission, really, we really should be entertaining them, they have not been having forums, and it's a really important board.
Anybody else?
Chris, you mentioned about publicizing, you're thinking Erin's going to be a great candidate, I don't mean to pick on this issue, but just in general, about a seat. I think to your point, Dennis, someone just resigned, and it should be published where many people have the opportunity to apply for the seat. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, basically, that, you know, it's, she seems like a wonderful person, I don't, you know, I read in her letter, but I'm just saying, right, I mean, for instance, I'll give her for instance, all right? I know he's resigning this week, so I wait a couple of days, not from this, from the committee.
Let's try.
And then, and then, you know, I just immediately followed with my letter about three days later, because I know, oh, there's going to be a vacancy, because, you know, it doesn't even give a chance for this gentleman or somebody else to apply. That's all I'm saying, I have nothing against him, I'm just waiting, 30 days, maybe other people, other unaffiliateds would apply, that's all, I, and I would probably be the first one to vote for the, for the, for this lady in 30 days is up. That's, that's all my point was.
But in the charter, though, we have to default to the charter. So, the charter indicates that the vacated seat is given 30 days to replace itself. So, she's replacing a vacated seat. She's replacing a vacated, unaffiliated seat. Per the charter, you can do it the next day, you can do it an hour later. If a resignation is received and that seat's vacant, that's what our charter states. I mean, so, I mean, agree or disagree, unfortunately, that's what we're going to have to follow right now. That's why I'm talking about having to institute a policy that could supersede something that may be in the charter that says, you know, what policy do we want to put in place for that? That's why this, we have this discussion. Because it shuts people out, you're right. But again, you have to give, you have to give that party the ability to replace their seat per the charter. So, that's what we're running, I mean, I know it's a longer conversation than just today.
No, that's good.
No, I mean-
It's a good way to get the council started, they have to know what the parameters are.
All right, any other discussion?
Well, we have to table Jerome Warner.
Well, we'll, yeah, well, I'm going to do the other, whatever there, when do we do the, right, we're going to do the other ones now? I didn't do-
So, we have a motion?
We have a motion for the appointment of John Escobales, John May, Jason Feeney, Tanya Abitello, and Erin Guadet.
Tim's second.
Tim's second. No other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, so we're good. And then, we're going to, I'll need a motion to abstain, or to table Jerome Warner until we get his information.
I'll make that motion, table Jerome Warner.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, so now, with the next appointments are to the four that are listed here, so the Lower Connecticut River Council of Governments, RiverCog, Police Pension Committee, CRAD Representative, and Capital Expenditure Committee. I, I'm going to go, I'm going to make a motion that we appoint Christine to the Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governments Representative and the CRAD Representative.
Second.
Any discussion?
Christine?
Feel the train. Feel the train.
Yeah, sir.
Okay, good. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It passes, thank you, Christine. Okay, so the next would be the appointments for the Police Pension Committee. I'll make a, looking for a motion to nominate, and I'm sorry, to appoint myself and Mark Richards to that committee.
One second, oh, I'll make that motion.
A second?
Mark Richards and Kristina Skovitch to the Police Pension Committee.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Not in question of your expertise or anything, but I just want to point out, in the past, it's been very challenging to have in-depth conversation on the police pension when people don't really have any knowledge of how a pension works and/or the liabilities and/or investments. So, I just want to reiterate that we need to make sure that people really have some knowledge base there to be able to make those decisions.
Okay. Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right. And finally, the Capital Expenditure Committee. There's going to be, I'll make a, a recommendation to, to nominate Dennis Donovan, Tim Guerra, and Kristina Skovitch.
Second. I mean, I make that motion to appoint Kristina Skovitch, Dennis Donovan, and Tim Guerra.
A second?
Second, I'll second.
Any discussion?
What would be the rest of the makeup?
Yeah, so there's two at large that we would have to, to appoint, so we do have two others that were at the general public that we're going to have to come up with.
Very good.
So, we'll discuss that as well. Any other discussion?
Are you considering kind of representation from the board of that, or how are you going to apply to that?
We've talked, yeah, yeah, we've talked about that, so.
Is there any, so you, you've talked about what is the makeup of the two at large, are they going to come from other boards or commissions, or is it?
We've talked about it, so we haven't come to a final decision yet, so there's been a lot of names of who we're going to appoint. So, we're aware of what we need, as far as the people that need to be involved in those decisions.
May I chime in on that, sir?
You certainly can.
It's been the practice, Christine, through the years, that the people at large should represent no other board or commission. Therefore, no one has, like, say, a advantage, if you will, during the deliberations. So, we've always kept that, Carol, has that not been, the case has been. So, we've, we've tried to keep it that way, so that it's a fair and above board, no one say, oh, sure, so-and-so is on the police commission, that's why the police commission got all their cars or whatever, or any other commission, park record or whatever. So, we sort of stayed away from having anybody from another board or commission being the person at large, I just throw that out there.
Anybody else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So, that passes. Okay. Number four is authorizing the resolutions for the school roof replacement projects. So, there are three town resolutions for the roof replacement projects. And we're going to have to make, each one will be read individually, and a motion made to approve these resolutions, so I will read them through, and then we will, we'll work through those. So, the town resolutions for roof replacement projects. Number one is the Town Council authorizes the Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of the Department of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for roof replacement projects at both the Lewin G. Joel J. Elementary School and Jared Elliott Middle School. So, we would just need a motion to pass that resolution.
Make that motion.
Mr. Chairman? Second? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, so it passes.
Chair, I'm going to abstain if that's okay, just as an employee of schools.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so, number two is the Town Council authorizes the creation of a building committee for roof replacement projects at both the Lewin G. Joel J. Junior Elementary School and Jared Elliott Middle School. And also appoint Mike Horniac, Jack Sherbin, and Dennis Donovan to that committee. Have a motion to approve?
Make that motion.
A second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
I'll abstain again.
And number three, the Town Council authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specific specifications for the roof replacement projects at both Lewin G. Joel Junior Elementary School and Jared Elliott Middle School. Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Number two, what were the names again, Mike?
Uh, Mike Horniac, Dennis, and Jack Sherbin. Finish all that. Okay, abstained?
Abstained.
Okay, we're moving on now to number six, which is the Human Services Authorization Resolution. So, this is a motion, obviously, to approve a resolution, there's a change within, was this the grant that there was a change? So, I will read, you want to have Dave? Oh, okay, Dave Malillo, come forward, and you can sit over here and just kind of give us a little brief overview of what's going on.
Well, technically, the resolution would say that this man can authorize the two sign on behalf of the council. What it relates to is the, the end year of a grant that we received five years ago. That grant was for $500,000, $100,000 a year, and it ends June 30th. And along the way, they, the governor rescinded 5%, which is, they're authorized to do that with money that's already been budgeted. So, they took, so it was a $95,000 grant, now they're giving us back 635 of those dollars, so that's why there's the need for a new contract. There's also a 500 and something dollar coda that I have no idea where it comes from, and I can't explain it to you, because I don't know, but it's 1% of anything I could figure. But we're going to get 1,100 and some odd dollars more.
Okay. Any questions for Dave? No? Okay, so, I'll read through the resolution. Town of Clinton, Connecticut, authorizing resolution. I hereby certify that at a town meeting of the Town Council of the Town of Clinton, duly called and held on December 4th, 2019, at 54 East Main Street, Clinton, Connecticut, the following resolution was duly adopted in conformity with the charter and bylaws of said corporation, and is in full force and effect resolved. Peter Neff, interim town manager of the Town of Clinton, Connecticut, is authorized to enter into and amend contractual instruments with the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services of the State of Connecticut. I have a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay.
Thank you, David. Next is the number seven item, which is the 2020 meeting calendar, everybody got a copy of the calendar? So, basically, we're just looking for a motion to approve that calendar.
Motion to approve the meeting calendar for 2020.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'd like to just make, put something on record that, to me, the eight o'clock's are very difficult, but that's not solely why I bring up the point, I think if we want to welcome the community into these meetings, it would be more conducive for, for most folks for the evening meetings, so I think that's something in the future just to consider. Now, I'll certainly vote for this, but I think moving forward, that's, that needs to be a consideration.
Anybody else? I think, I, I guess that's a discussion too for the charter, because the charter indicates, and we've talked about it, so the charter indicates that we are required to have one evening meeting, so basically, what that indicates is that we're defaulting to a morning meeting and requiring that we have one evening meeting. So, if there's, you know, something that people want to talk about going forward, obviously, that's another charter issue that we will probably address going forward.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't know when it changed to a morning meeting during what administration, but would someone like to give the rationale why it was happening, Carol, or Christine, or Tim, why? Yeah.
Been on for 10 years, it's always been morning, twice a month, and evening's twice.
Colonial Days, maybe?
All right, Christine?
So, just to clarify, there's nothing in the charter that forces you to have a morning meeting, just indicating that you do need to have an evening meeting. The order of business for the town, a lot of actions take place at that morning meeting that need to be addressed specifically on that day, and then can be implemented during the day, during the business hour, so that's why it's, it's really necessary to have a morning meetings, because a lot of, like I said, a lot of times, you could have something coming down the pike Tuesday, needs to be addressed immediately, and, and the action needs to be taken place during the business day on the Wednesday, and so it's sort of imperative to have the morning meetings on the calendar so you can continue with the daily business of the town.
Just out of curiosity, what types of legal issues, financial issues?
I, everything under the sun, I would say, yeah. There's a lot that comes down that really, you can't anticipate, and, and really needs to be addressed during the day. You can always have special meetings, but again, special meetings need to be noticed 24 hours in advance, at least when you have a regular monthly meeting scheduled, or what a regular meeting scheduled, you can anticipate that and say, all right, we've got that covered, we've got a meeting, we can add that item to the agenda if so needed.
Karen?
That, I mean, what you're describing sounds like emergency measures that have to be addressed that same day, is that truly, I mean, I don't, I recall, I recall having documents that had to be signed that day because they had moved down in the calendar to that day, but I don't recall emergencies where something had to go that day because it arrived the previous day.
There's been a few, and also consider your boards and commission appointments, that a lot of the boards and commissions are waiting.
Well, then, evening meetings are a good argument for boards and commissions, because then the candidates would be able to get here much more frequently, so.
Just giving you my opinion from having served for two years and what goes on a daily basis, and what we experienced, that it is extremely beneficial to have that morning meeting to allow the town business to continue without interruption.
Anyone else? Eric, anything good? You good? Okay. Okay, the motion's on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Number eight is social media, so, we wanted to address the issue of, or talk about it, have an open conversation about how we go about and move forth with that. I know previously, there was a Town of Clinton Facebook page, so I don't know, basically, how we want to handle that going forward, I think there needs to be a Facebook page that, that the town, the town can utilize, and the town can be able to post things, it needs to be utilized a lot more, I think, because, you know, that is one way to get out to people, kind of what's going on here, letting them know what's happening in town, the people that can't make meetings, and, you know, it's exciting, and you need to direct and, and put things that are happening in town so people know that things are moving along. And a lot of people complain that they don't know what's going on. So, I think it's up to the council then to set up some sort of, you know, some way, find out some way that we're going to get this message out to the public of what we're doing here. We're sitting here, seven people sitting at a table, a lot of people out there don't know what we're doing, so, I guess, I just want to hear from people on how we should handle this going forward. I know there was a Facebook page that was up before, that's now down, so, do we revisit that page, Town of Clinton Facebook page, you know, what do we do? If anybody has any ideas or thoughts? Yeah, I mean, that's good, but we can't, I mean, it's great that we're being filmed, but where do we put that? You know, let's direct people, a lot of people don't even know that we're being filmed, you know? The message has to get out to the public. The message is great here, and in here, but the message out there, which is what matters. We need to let the people here know what we are doing, and we don't do that very well, or we haven't done that very well. You know, we post, you know, we post certain things in certain places, but it's like the people that, you know, are contained to these positions, boards, building, we needed to get out to everybody. And so, I don't know, kind of, how we do it.
I think, if I may?
Go ahead, yeah.
I think that a big chunk of the population of Clinton is on Facebook, and that there should be a strong Facebook presence by the town hall. It's got to be active, it's got to be vital, it's got to move, it's got to be current. I would, I don't know what you would do about people's responses to comments, because those are out of control a lot of the time.
Listen, I'm not looking for it to be all things Clinton, so.
Right, right.
We don't need 500 responses to something we do.
No, we don't, we just need-
And I don't, and that's what I'm saying, I don't know if there's a way that we, you know, you have to let them comment, right?
Well, do you?
Or you don't? See, that's what I'm saying, I don't know how all that works.
Is it news delivery source, or is it a, put your opinions here source? I think it would be a news delivery source.
News delivery.
And that you would, I mean, if you let people know via the message board out in front of the annex that this page existed, that they would, it would remind them to, to check it, to verify it, I mean, to look at it once in a while. And yesterday, we had a conversation about who would, no, the conversation was about the website, the town website, which is not fluid, it doesn't grab people and-
I think that's executive session conversations, and really should be-[1710.52]
Talking about the town website in particular.
Yes, we had a conversation yesterday, it was executive session.
Well, okay, I'm starting a new conversation about the town website and how it needs to be more prominent in people's lives. I mean, that should be the first place people are going to find out where power is out, what resources are during a storm. There, that page needs to be more vital, and it could be. It's just, no?
I'm sorry, I disagree with what you're saying right now, having experienced it. There is, I want me to sit up here?
Yeah, why don't you come up here?
All the major departments, fire, police, all run Facebook pages, and they all have followers, and all that information goes out 24/7. So the police department has it, and it has 24/7. In order to operate the town website like that, somebody's got to be on the website 24/7. So we replace that by having the fire department, Public Works, the police department, and the town hall run their own, run Facebook pages, and they all share interagency. So they all have followers. So if there's something that happens in the middle of the night and Public Works comes across it, they post it on their Facebook, the PD shares it, the town hall can share it. The website for the town, the only dynamic part of it is the emergency warning, which will send out, anybody that's signed up an email, there's been an emergency, it has a flashing bar, you know, school closed, that type. But the instantaneous stuff that goes out has traditionally, for the last couple of years, come out of those Facebook pages on those interagencies, and very successfully. And a lot of people actually contact the agencies back through that Facebook page. So the website, in order, we've had this discussion, I've had this discussion with Christine too. In order for it to be dynamic, we have to get the departments and the boards and the commissions to go on the website and update, which is an impossible task. It's just virtually impossible to do. So the dynamic part is the announcements on the front page, which Mary does, the department has put in there, which has that scrolling information that comes on. And then there's the emergency warning bar across the top. The rest of the website will never be dynamic, because it's just too much information for people. When they want to go see how to get a permit at Public Works, they go to the website. They want to know what's going on down on a 24/7 emergency basis, they go to Facebook. And that's really the way it's been. The website was never designed to be that type of, for that type of usage, for emergency announcements, other than, like I said, that little thing up at the top, the little red light that blinks.
And I mean, even the neon sign, you had to have people drive by it in order to, for it to be utilized. So I mean, it's difficult.
Personally, I think Facebook is a great tool. I think it gets the information out. People that have access to it can do it from their phone, can do it from computers at home, can do all that. You can do the same thing with the webpage, but you really have to be good at the webpage to get in there and put an emergency announcement out. You got, as opposed to Facebook where if you're administrative, you can log right in, put something out.
But the content management system for the website is user-friendly, it is intuitive, it's not challenging for staff to update their pages, it's just a matter of them actually doing it. But it is not dynamic, as Pete's saying, so it's not going to really benefit the community unless you're specifically going to an area and looking for something, Googling it or.
Who would be responsible for adding the information on Facebook?
Whoever you want to be responsible for.
That's right. That's the other question.
Whoever you want to give authority to to add information to the page. In other words, you can set the page up and give rights to modify, edit, and you can list people that have that right. So you can give it to a manager, council chairman, Mary, and then you can just let them do that, and you can limit who has the right to add, who can remove stuff from the website. You don't want 1,000 people adding to it, because, you know, you get all different kinds of stuff. So you got to kind of limit it, but you can set it up whichever way you can set it, so they can't comment, you can set it up so there isn't 1,000 different ways to do it. I think the point is, when I set up Public Works, it was a page off of my page, and it was, it was a nightmare to get it switched over to the ownership of Public Works. So if you're going to set up a Facebook page, I've already looked into it, we'll set up some municipal business page that the town owns, so that no matter who's here, you know, it just continues on. And once you share it with the Public Works and the fire department and the police department, everybody will like it, and you'll have as many people as you had before. It'd be a very short period of time.
I think Facebook remains a platform for maybe our generation, maybe mid-middle-aged folks, but younger folks, I don't think use it that often, at least that's what I hear. And secondly, we got to make these places where people can want to go. And I don't know if they want, I think there's a little bit of work to get to some of them. We have to make it appealing for them to come and want to get this information.
The message has got, that's what I'm trying to find, is what is the best avenue to get our message out to the people as a whole? Okay? Tim?
Well, at the meeting we had the other night, the public hearing for the town manager, where they had, everybody came. A lot of the people that I talked to said that they found out about it via the website, town website, and it was advertised, and they went on the, and they, they're using the videos now, the videos that we're having here. They actually found out about it by going and reviewing the video. So I'm not saying that's the, you know, I would have to agree, I'm not on Facebook myself, but I'd have to agree with Pete that it, since so many people are, it probably does make sense to have that consideration. But certainly, I would not exclude the town website, because there are people that are using it.
But you can't exclude it, but I mean, it's just, it's got to be layers of outlets. I mean, I'm sure Eric will write a great story about this one day, that we're going to have this great new Facebook page.
What we find on Facebook is Public Works, if they have a roadblock, a tree down, they'll post that on Facebook at 2:00 in the morning. Or, you know, we put out, I used to put out a general thing, roads are slippery, be careful this morning, or trucks have been dispatched, we're actively sanding, but that doesn't mean the roads are not slippery. Those types of things, whereas when you're talking about on Facebook, there is a selection committee for the town managers meeting, meet and greet at the town hall, and that's something that should be on the website. But what you find on Facebook is really the, you know, emergencies, or fire department may advertise, it's Fire Prevention Week, and put up a whole thing on fire prevention, but it'll say fire prevention on the town news feed, but there'll be more information located at that website. So I agree with you, I think it needs to be in multiple places.
And I mean, there's the updates on what we're doing, and the things that we're working on, you know, what's going on at the old morgue, and what's going on at Unilever. I mean, these are just things that people just want to know about, because you get asked all the time. And I mean, if we could just have a platform where they're, we're just putting that out and people know, it just, you know, makes it easier for everybody, and then they can see the progress, they can see what we're doing, they can see that, you know, that things are moving. So I guess I can work with Pete.
You can look into establishing a Facebook page and give you some references at the next meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, see? Something else repeated here. All right. Next, real quick, on the chairman's report. So just wanted to talk real quick on a couple of things. So lines of communication that we have between, right now, this table and Mary and Pete, who are both obviously doing great jobs, by the way, I want to thank both of them for all the work that they've done through this transition. They, they're doing a lot more work than anybody knows, and so I just want to publicly thank both of them for doing all that. So, and this may change, obviously, when we have a town manager, but like as of now, if anybody has questions, concerns, or anything, just filter them through me, and then it's either I can answer them, or I can go to Mary or go to Pete and then get you an answer back, so that they can deal with, there's a lot of other stuff, obviously, that they're dealing with. So just to kind of streamline that for now. Should this change with the town manager isn't fully in place? I mean, that's, you know, their decision on how they want interaction between the town council and themselves. So we'll deal with that once we have that permanent in place. The other thing is, please use our, our town emails. We need to start using the town emails for everything. All lines of communication need to be through the town emails. Okay? And then I just want to talk quickly about the search real quick before we go into executive session. So I just want to publicly thank the people that were involved in this whole process. I think it's important that they're recognized for all the work that they've done through this. I want to thank, obviously, Doug Thomas from SGR, who was the search firm that we hired. I want to thank the town search committee, which was chaired by Phil Sangle, Carrie Allen, and Selma DeLeah, Tim Guerra, Dennis Donovan, and Hank Teske. Again, people don't know the amount of work that was put into this search. These guys and everybody spent a lot of time, of their own time, putting this in process and getting this moving along. And there was a lot of work. The work that Doug did for this is outstanding. I mean, the amount of information that we got to make that decision, and that to make the decision that we're going to have to make is invaluable. So thank you to all of them. And I'd also like to thank Lynn Heidick, John Allen, and Hank Teske, who were our chauffeurs for the candidates when they came into town. They should be recognized for taking time out of their days, for taking those candidates around, as well as all the department heads and town employees who took time out of their day when these candidates came in and went and met with them and talked to them and got their feelings and their opinions, because as I've said before, this isn't a seven-person decision. I wanted more people involved in the decision for the town manager position, because where the council will work with him, but the department heads will work with him on a daily basis. They need to be comfortable with the individual, they need to be, you know, happy with that decision. So thank all of them for being involved. And so, other than that, I am good on chairman's reports. Yep? And then we're going to go to Peter's interim town manager report.
Which I think is, they handle a lot of work. You had, you see this morning, two sheets or two packets, one called procedures guide to the town charter, the other called policies guide to the town charter. Mary and I spend way too much time in the town charter, I won't tell you, we've met with that a thousand times. We still have some questions out to town council, we're waiting answers, but basically, what this does is a quick guide, who handles what. So if you want to know who does the annual budget, some boards and commissions, and you can look at where the X's are, they recommend. Review goes to the, submits the budget to the finance department, they then, it goes through review with the town manager, and then it goes, and it approves by the town council, who then holds the budget responsible. This is a quick guide, in case you want to know. This is the more comprehensive guide. So when you look at this, and it goes to expenditures in counties, it's all different kinds of things in here, but it's the meat of the charter, broken out so you have an easy reference point to look at. We've also done it, so we've cited the paragraph, the section, and where it comes from, in some cases, the page. So this is a cut and paste job, comes word for word out of the charter. We highlighted the red where we think you need to know that there's certain timelines and deadlines, but I encourage you to read this, and I put up in front, up to the top a little caveat in, you know, this is a quick guide, and there's still some stuff being inflexed or fluxed, because we, some, not conflicts in the language, but there are some issues in the language that we need to resolve. And consequently, we'll be probably coming back, or I'll be coming back and recommending that the town council adopt some policies to make this work a little bit smoother, which you have a right to, to, you know, make this a little bit easier for it to function up. And again, it'll be your decision whether or not to adopt those policies. So what this is will work too for the person that's transiting in or transitioning the new town manager in. This will be a quick guide for him to look at as well, or her, and then, you know, he can begin to move forward. So if you have any questions about what is here, yep?
The red, sorry.
Yep.
Can you just reiterate what the red is?
The red is, is when you look at expenditures and accounting, basically, you read down further in the budget, you know, under three, up to $2,999, a department head can purchase or deliver one. Between $3,000 and $7,499 are required to get quote, but if you're buying light items, I mean, I always give the pavement, because that's easy. You go out and you can bid tilt on it, it'll give you a unit cost per ton of pavement in place, and basically, that's a quote. But because you're going to buy 10,000 tons of pavement, you've exceeded the $7,500 limit and the quote limit, so you have to go out to bid for that. So the charter, and this is language that hasn't changed, I wish it had, because it's very confusing when you look at it, but basically, in the red, you have the right to exclude professional services, engineering, and technical services. So actually, I'm going to recommend, you know, a little bit of engineering service. So for instance, our technical service, we have a consultant or a company that runs, basically backs up the network, backs up all our information out of the cloud, and maintains and helps our staff here keep everything running smoothly and address those issues. You don't have to bid for that. It's wise to quote for it, but it's not required to get a bid, because it's hard to change that service on a bid. You can get yourself to end up. Same thing with engineering, same thing with other professional services. So that can be excluded, that you're allowed to do that as a council, don't hire the people that want to do that. And then, you know, if you look at paragraph, to be any purchase order contract, including continuing order or contract of purchase of the same commodity over a period of time, has to be bid. So we bid out our catch basing pleading, we pay $21 an asset for catch basing, but we do 1,600 catch bases. So that is a bid in service, you just can't go out and quote for that. So the department heads are pretty, actually, mostly Todd at Public Works is pretty familiar with this process. So that's what is highlighted in red, the stuff I felt that you needed to really understand and look at, but again, it doesn't release you from going and actually looking at the charter. All right? Devin?
One other question. When you get to section 10-4 and the subsequent columns, you have it indicated who the, the party is who renders a decision. Is that because, well, is that because the?
Which one, one special, give me the headings.
Section 10-4, you have special appropriations. If you go down to paragraph E, it's the last one that's defined columns. Is that because the defined column represents everything that flows?
Your paragraph D.
Yeah, that flows.
Versus the town manager, upon appropriate request and recommendation, the town council may transfer yes. Everybody, the town council has to approve it and send it to the town manager, and he can't do anything until they.
So everything that flows down the next, all the subsequent pages?
It doesn't flow across the page, but it says who's involved in that very process, and then the words define how the process has to occur. So, you know, when you go through it, you'll see the finance department listed, you'll see town council, town manager listed, you see boards and commissions listed. So if there's an X in your town council column, it means you have to be part of that process, and more than likely, you are the initiator of that process. So the department head needs a special appropriation that's not in the budget, not in the, that has been planned, he needs to go to the town council first. Now, the town manager may bring it to you, but the town council is the one that has to authorize those expenditures, and then they just simply instruct the finance, the town manager and the director of finance to find the money, and up to a certain amount of money, I think it's 50,000, it just can come from undesigned fund balance, surplus cash, or it can come from other light items based upon a recommendation. So everybody has an X underneath their column, that means they are involved in that process. So we've gone through and checked it twice, probably going to check it again, and we've had the town council, the town attorney look at this, and we do have some stuff in it out. But this seems to be pretty, I would say, it's, you know, probably 95% there, and I think the rest of it is really giving you recommended policies to you in order to clear up the discrepancies, kind of like you're running into on the appointments.
First of all, thank you, Peter, for doing this, it's very helpful. Has the town attorney, you said the town attorney has, or has not looked over this?
This one is quoted right from the town charter, we've had it interpret the town charter.
Right.
So what you see here is reflected with that interpretation. Where you get into an issue is because things are located in three different locations, they don't quite say the same thing, they sort of do, but don't. So the town manager's responsibilities are mentioned under town manager, but they're also mentioned under appropriations, they're also mentioned under budget. So when you look across that, and you look at it, and you say, okay, I know what they meant here, this is kind of what they meant over here, so what we did is, Mary, we put together a series of questions for clarification, and he's clarified most of them. The problem with it, he gives you clarification, which just raises another question we need to ask. So we're, it's really, for the most part, this is really what it is, because it's really quoted from the charter. So, you know, like I said, but that little thing up top says this is a living document, and it doesn't excuse you from never reading the charter, so, which is why we're going to. If you have any other questions, if you have in the office, you can give me a call or something you have to do with. All right? So that's, that. Under, just quickly, under Public Works, under morgue abandonment, we authorize three designs to be proffered at each request. They want to have something they can look at, reject, say yes, I, yes, or no to. That's to address the NRCS grant to repair the abandonment behind the school. On the sidewalk from Petey to Meadow Road, that was a grant that the town accepted 300 and something thousand dollars. It did not include design money. So I've met with Todd several times, to look at his budget and look at, we think we can cover a major portion, somewhere in the 30,000, mid 30s, to do design, and it's complicated, because you got to get permitted from the state, and they have to approve everything. It's not like you're building a sidewalk on, you know, on a town road. It's, it's not like you're building a sidewalk on, you know, on a town road. So, I'm working with Todd to come up with stuff out of his budget where we can grab that from, because the sidewalk line item is not sufficient enough to cover those engineering costs. And that line item was really designed to repair sidewalks, but we figured we could do something with that. And then, his general engineering is very, is very limited. Most of the engineering, budgeting in Public Works is and has been for years project-oriented, as opposed to just, here's a lot of engineering. So, if, we don't even have enough to cover that engineering cost, and that would eliminate in us if we have a problem somewhere else, of asking the town engineer to come in and give us an opinion on what we should be doing, that is a plan. So, we'll come back, two weeks, give you a recommendation as to how we think that should proceed. We do have the money to build the sidewalk, we just got to get, get an engineer. Any questions on that? I'd like you to, Todd went out, and we haven't done this in probably 18 years, I think is the last time we did this, where we went out and had a professional company come in, survey all the 78 miles of road in town, give us a maintenance plan, give us a, basically database, they're going to inspect the paving, they're going to give us a maintenance plan for the paving, and then they're going to train our staff on how to use that information so that we can actually keep the database and keep the database maintained. Last time we did this, the then current director of Public Works didn't understand what the database was, so we threw it out. So, I recovered some of it by, you know, you know, there's change in, you know, PDF to Excel spreadsheet, so you can manipulate it, but basically, we've done five-plus million dollars worth of road work and, or more, in the last 18 years, and we have load work coming up in this next issue that we're going to do. So, it is our recommendation that we do confirmation and get the database in, so that we can maintain it, and actually confirm that we're doing the right roads. They may see something that isn't, you know, Todd does have the money, his budget for the son of the road. So, his recommendation, and I concur with him, he had two quotes. One was from BHB, who interestingly enough, did the one 18 years ago. It was $21,201 for Beta Group, for $22,000. It is a professional service. His recommendation, his request is we go with Beta Group, he liked their proposal better, he liked the amount of information, how it was going to be laid out there. So, if it's okay, I would ask for a motion for the town council to authorize me to enter into agreement with Beta Group in this process, huh?
Motion. Let me just ask you, regarding that, is that, is it standard for municipal to have databases that-
Really, yes, very much standard. I tried to do this several times when I was director of Public Works, and, you know, just couldn't get, get it together to do it. The interesting part is, like I said, if we kept the database from the last one, where we could go ahead and have done that, we still would have to at this probably point in time, have somebody come in and confirm it, confirm what we have for information, but we have nothing right now that's of any value to us. In terms of planning, if you were to say to me, well, what do you see five years down the road, I couldn't tell you. And it's not fair to, to Todd, or the Department of Public Works, to try to figure out, make the, we've been making those decisions, but you know, you know, you may, we may not be always the correct decision, but it's just based on how much we know. So, I think you really do need something to back up what decisions we're making.
Pete, this, this, Beta Group is going to evaluate the roads-
Correct.
-prioritize-
Yes.
-which roads need to be done, and give us somewhat of a timetable, suggest a timetable.
Suggest a timetable, and what maintenance features occur on that road.
Yep.
So, they'll say, this road needs to be reclaimed, this road needs to be built, this road needs to be sealed, this road needs. So, they'll give you, and really, they break the roads out so you can do it sectionally. So, they generally go from intersection to intersection. They give you a plan, they give you the square footage, how long the road is, how wide the road is, the general condition of the road, and then, a maintenance plan, well, they'll, they'll give you a timetable as to when they think it needs to be done, or what they recommend. So, for instance, they may take airline roads, which was taken five years ago now, and they say, you should crack seal this within the next two years to preserve the road. So-
Will they all, I'm sorry, will they also do budget with it, of course? Will they do the budget number, I mean, the-
They can give you a budget, but Todd can give you a budget number once he knows, because we have all those unit costs available. They'll give you an estimated budget on today's dollars, it's just, you know.
Correct.
So, while I was canvassing the town two years ago, and then again for this election, there's been a significant amount of frustration on the town's part regarding sidewalks. So, I'm concerned that there's no incorporation of addressing or planning for the current degradation of our sidewalks in town, and I'm wondering if that can be included in this.
I, I'll ask Todd to take a look at it and do that. Right now, no, it wasn't included, so we have that, the bond issue coming up, but we can certainly take a look at that as well. Yep?
Pete, the company you recommend is solely an engineering company, is that correct?
Yeah.
What were the two bids again?
Farmers.
What were the two bids again, please?
Twenty-one and twenty-two.
Twenty-one and twenty-two.
Oh, one was 22,000. Beta, which is the one we recommended, was 22,900. BHB was 21,200.
Anyone else? Comments?
Yeah, I have just a question, Pete. When this report is done, obviously, it'll be decided on what roads are probably the most important to proceed first. Is this part of a plan that will incorporate a number of years? Because you're not going to be able to do all of these roads in one year.
I know. I will tell you, I gave the town, before Christine was here, I gave the town a 20-year plan, that they put between $500 and $700,000 aside every year, you wouldn't have to buy for roads again. You can see we're that way. So, yes, they're going to give you a plan, and whether or not the town funds it is another issue. So, what happens is, when you fail to fund those plans, you know, you, you never catch up. So, we spent a lot of time, I had, doing patch, you know, the road where you could have cracked sealed the road and preserved it for another 10 years without an issue, we don't have money to do that. So, or where you could have overlaid a road and gotten another 15 years out of it, we haven't done it, we haven't had the money. So, then, within 10 years, now you've got to reclaim the road, and, you know, do a complete paving. So, it'll give you those parameters, and you'll be able to plan out, almost, I think at the end of this, you'll be able, you'll have a 10 to 15-year plan, which you can immediately look at, but you've got to be able to-
I just want to add, I think this is hugely beneficial for everybody in the community, because I imagine at the end of the day, because it's going to be a PDF format, you're going to be able to map all this in G I S, and you're going to be able to see all the roads in some timeframe. That means everybody can, in the community, can go in, look at their road, and say, all right, three years, my road is on, on the schedule, or one year, or five years. And that will instill confidence in the, the public that the road is going to be coming up. So, more than likely, they'd be willing to fund those types of projects, as opposed to right now, it's a little nebulous, because we just deal with emergencies.
I like that.
You know what else? Have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any other discussion?
I'd like to say, I think it's fantastic, a great idea and long overdue, very nice.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay, very quickly, the Morgan sidewalk project, the sidewalk up to the school is complete, accepted. It was originally budgeted at $1,050,000. The final cost on it is $928,310, it's 29 cents, I don't know where the 29 cents came from, which means that it came in under budget by $121,680 instead of 29 cents. So, that's a very, I'm pleased that that contractor got it, because he's done a lot of work, but he's done a really good job.
Did very nice work.
Yeah, did nice work. Christine had a lot of input into that, and I like her, and it's, it's all done, and they use it, I see people a lot of the time. Very quickly, our finance, Sue and her department, initiated the budget process, the budget to be back to, you know, the-
I think it's, uh-
Eighteen to nineteen. We announced at the last department end meeting, I said, we're not going to explain to you, you've been doing budgets for years, and we're not going to give you a percentage, because you know the history as well as I do, how difficult it is to get a budget through this town. So, don't, you know, don't put it all on us to figure out how to do your budget, so that, you know, we can get a budget through. So, Sue and I, because the health insurance expires June 30th, we've opted out of that program that we're in now. So, Sue and I are actually meeting with the state rep next Tuesday. I've had some meetings with Mary Ann O'Donnell, because their school teachers are all on that now, and they have a very good track history with it. So, we're going to need to get some pricing. I think the problem we're going to have is, we need to get something in place by the end of June, so July 1st is town's calling. So, that requires that we get a program, put it together, get it to the unions, to have them preview and see what issues lie with it, then get it back, and then get it priced, to make sure that, you know, we're going to get it pre-priced, but if there's any additions or additions. I would, I would recommend that we try to get the medical benefit program out of the way before we go into negotiations. So, I have some feedback that the unions are interested in looking at all this, so I'm hoping that, based on what we find out, we'll be pretty successful. Mary Ann says it's been a very good program for schools, it's saved them a significant amount of money. So, hopefully, that'll all work out. So, Sue and I are working on that, and Sue was working on bonding, I'm with her, we've had, you had an issue in February?
Yes.
We had an issue coming up in February, cover the rest of Morgan, and then, cover some of the other projects we've done under the last appropriation, so-
Bridges.
-the bridges and some other stuff that they set up, so. On technology, the phone system, as you know, may not have known, it's in the program, and, valid communication is in, and they're being surveyed, and they're going to put a new phone system in. At the end of this phones process, this is something I started years ago with the Board of Ed, when they built the new Morgan, at the end of this, you'll be able, anybody in town will be able to dial, dial in the offices, a four-digit extension, and reach anybody in the Board of Ed, the P D, the, anywhere in town, anybody that's on the system. Right now, you have to dial a regular number to get to a lot of places, but everybody will be on the same extension. Board of Ed manages under their mainframe at the new Morgan, which we had built when they built the new Morgan, and it's backed up, P D up in the data closet out there, so hopefully that'll, I think this is the last major, this will be the annex at the same Under the website modifications, Mary and I, we tried, we have that time, we did a little bit of it, but we're going to go through the website. There's still Board of Finance listed, there's still, you know, committees, like the G I S committee, I've missed some of the names on it, and, you know, it's ancient. So, we're going to start cleaning some of that stuff up. We already did put town, town council at clickct.org, and town manager at clickct.org as links, so people can email us if there's, or email the town council and talk, so that's on the one. On land use office, we've advertised some positions, we're going to try to fill over behind in that area, I met with the land use people, and there's some things that we need to get done, but it's hard to do when there's only two people in the office, and they can't give them time, because we don't, still have people there, so. Pearson School has been transferred to the town. Christine did a lot of pre-work with this, so, pretty much what Christine has done with. The only, we met with Mary Ann, we turned the building, and the building is spotless. They've left some maintenance equipment there, so that we can utilize the facility. Parker Rec is going to utilize the facility for three days a week for basketball, which helps us in a couple different respects, primarily insurance. Bo is working on schedule with Todd and Bill at Public Works in order to cover it, so we have somebody in the building, when they're in the building, we're not going to leave it empty, leave it unattended. School system is going to, they've already done all the maintenance on the boilers for the year, they've done a lot of the pre-maintenance on the systems. They're going to keep ownership until their contacts, contracts went out for the alarm system, for, you know, fire and intrusion, and then, the town will at that point, hopefully know what they're doing, and will take it over at that point. We will have to pick up utilities, so, Sue, I know I have a budget, I've talked to Mary Ann about it, so, we're going to talk to Caroline to get it, and figure out how we're going to split out heat, water, and electrical at that point in time. But they did a nice job getting the building ready, to be honest with you. You could use it, you know, really, it's that good. I'll try to, I don't think that's it. I don't know, I think that's it, my Pearson School, and that's it all.
Thank you, Pete. Any questions for Pete? No? Thanks again, Pete.
Thank you, Pete.
Okay, number 11, so, yeah, when do we get, okay. Well, let's take a break before we go into the executive session. Make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the town manager position.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry, and invite Doug Thomas and Mary, she can know, into that executive session?
Do you intend to-
No. I wasn't planning on, should we? I don't know. I mean, we have town council, we have the town search committee. No? Everybody good with that? That's fine.
Yeah, I'm okay.
I'll make a motion for-